I'd like to call this Village Board meeting of June 2nd, 2016, to order. Would the clerk please take the roll?
President Jackson.
Here.
Trustee Schmidt.
Here.
Trustee Fanti.
Excused.
Trustee Light.
Here.
Trustee Miratato.
Here.
Trustee Pojak.
Here.
Trustee Schroeder.
Here.
Could you all please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to call the public hearing to order. It's a public hearing by the mayor and board of trustees for the purpose of receiving oral and written comments from the public concerning the annual appropriation ordinance for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2016 and ending April 30th, 2017. Public hearing is open, so if... What?
Go ahead.
Okay. So if there is anyone here that would like to make comments about the appropriation ordinance, please step forward at this time. Being known, a motion would be in order. Trustee Schmidt.
I move we close the public hearing.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The public hearing is closed. So we move on to community announcements. Trustee Schmidt.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Come on out for some fishing fun on Saturday, June 11th, at Heritage Park for the annual Glendale Heights Fishing Derby. From 9:30 a.m. till noon, the Village of Glendale Heights and FOP Lodge 52 will be hosting the annual fishing derby where you can try your luck at catching some of the trophy fish like catfish, bluegill, and bass that live in Lake Becerra. Registration begins at 9:30 a.m. and the derby will begin promptly at 10 a.m. At 11:45 a.m., we will have a trophy presentation with prizes. The fishing derby is a catch-and-release event. Bolt rides will also be available after the fishing derby from noon until 2 p.m. For more information on the fishing derby, please contact the Sports Hub at (630) 260-6060. The Village of Glendale Heights, in partnership with FOP Lodge 52 and the Glendale Heights Chamber of Commerce, invites you to the 17th Annual Glendale Heights Charity Golf Classic on an all-new day and time on Friday, June 17th, with a 9 a.m. shotgun start at Glendale Lakes Golf Club. This year, the Charity Golf Classic will be raising funds for Make-A-Wish Illinois, FOP Lodge 52 Community Enrichment Fund, and the Glendale Heights Chamber of Commerce Scholarship Fund. If you would like more information, wish to become a whole sponsor, or to make a raffle prize donation, please call Glendale Lakes Golf Club at (630) 260-0018. The mayor's office at (630) 909-5303. Help us make the 17th Annual Charity Golf Classic another great success. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Trustee Light.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Take your summer's fun to the next level by attending Glendale Heights Fest, known as one of the western suburbs' premier events. Glendale Heights Fest is Wednesday, July 13th through Sunday, July 17th, at Camera Park, 101 East Fullerton Avenue in Glendale Heights. Enjoy the North American Midway Entertainment Carnival along with exciting entertainment, rides, and fantastic food booths. Enjoy a breathtaking display of fireworks at dusk on Wednesday, July 13th, and Sunday, July 17th. Plan to spend a fun-filled week at Glendale Heights Fest with delicious food and entertainment for the entire family. Be sure to like our Facebook page to stay updated with important information about this year's Glendale Heights Fest.
Thank you, Mike. Clerk Schmidt.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Get your 2016-2017 Village Vehicle sticker today. The new vehicle sticker must be displayed by 12:01 a.m., July 1st, 2016, on the lower right-hand corner of the windshield. Passenger vehicle stickers are $15. Motorcycle tags are $12. Recreational vehicle stickers are $18. And trucks with B-plates are $25. There is an additional price scheduled for trucks based on their individual weights. Qualifying senior citizens receive one sticker per household at no charge. Village ordinance restricts overnight parking on village streets. To those vehicles having a valid vehicle sticker. For our residents' convenience, administrative services will also be open from 9 a.m. till noon on Saturdays throughout the month of June. For more information regarding Village vehicle stickers, call (630) 260-6000. The next coffee with the mayor and village board is scheduled for Saturday, June 4th, from 10 a.m. till noon at the Center for Senior Citizens. If you have any comments, suggestions, or questions for the mayor or village board, please call the mayor's office anytime at (630) 909-5303. Thank you.
Thank you, Marie. Trustee Miratato.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Join us at your neighborhood park party for some great family fun and the opportunity to meet the mayor and your district trustee. Park parties are held from 5:30 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. at various parks throughout the village. Enjoy a picturesque-style dinner as you play games and dance along with the day camp staff. Check out Glendale Heights Police Vehicles and Glen Side or Bloomingdale Fire Protection District trucks. For more information on your park party, visit glendalehighlightsparkingrefacility.com or call (630) 260-6060. Teaching safety awareness to our children when they are young is very important in our effort to protect their precious lives. The Village of Glendale Heights and the Glendale Heights Police Department strive to help by offering safety education throughout the Safety Town classes. Classes will begin Monday, June 13th through July 1st and will be offered three different sessions. Safety Town classes are for children five to seven years of age. Classes cover a variety of educational topics, including pedestrian, railroad, fire, bus, and bike safety, as well as stranger danger, first aid and poison, emergency 911, and seatbelt use. The registration fee is $15 for residents and $30 for non-residents. To register, contact the Glendale Heights Sports Hub at (630) 260-6060, or visit glendalehighlightsparkingrefacility.com.
Thank you. Thank you, Pat. Trustee Pojak.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Flag Day is celebrated on Tuesday, June 14th, in honor of our red, white, and blue. The following tips for proudly displaying our U.S. flag are recommended by the National Flag Day Foundation. Place the flag briskly and lower it ceremoniously. If you display the flag overnight, illuminate it. No other flag or pendant should be placed above or at the same level of the right of the U.S. flag. Don't allow the flag to touch anything beneath it, including the ground, water, or the floor. When your flag fades or wears thinly, typically after one year, replace it with a brand-new one. Remember to dispose of worn flags in the village flag depository located at the circular island in front of the village hall for proper military disposal. For information concerning the flag disposal program, contact me, Village Trustee Chester Pojak, at (630) 909-5310. Thank you.
Thank you, Chester.
You're welcome.
Trustee Schroeder.
Thank you, Mayor Jackson.
You're welcome.
The Glendale Heights Center for Senior Citizens and the Glen Allen American Legion Post III are teaming up to host a free veterans' information night on Wednesday, June 8th, from 6:30 to 8:30 p.m. at the Center for Senior Citizens. All veterans, active-duty military, National Guards, are invited to learn about the many benefits available to them. Veterans Affairs personnel will help you enroll in the VA healthcare system with a valid copy of your DD-214. Additional publications and informations will be available on many other benefits to all past and present veterans. For more information, please contact the Glendale Heights Center for Senior Citizens at (630) 260-6050. Also, the Glendale Heights 2O Aquatic Center is open for the season, so stop by and learn about swim lessons, private pool rentals, membership, and more. Come relax in the pool, dive in the deep well, or hang ten on the flow rider. Regular season hours on Monday through Friday from noon to 8:30 p.m., and Saturdays and Sundays from noon to 7 p.m. For more information, contact the Sports Hub at (630) 260-6060. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mary. Next, we have a proclamation recognizing Fire Chief Don Markowski, who was with Glen Side for 27 years...
Seven years and eight years.
And with eight years in Addison, who is finally retiring and leaving. And he was Fire Chief of the Year for the State of Illinois in 2016. So if there are no objections to the proclamation, I will sign it.
Go for it.
Chief Flint, I think you get to do the next three items.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
If you give me the opportunity, I'm going to go out of order a little bit of the...
You can do whatever you want.
...of the sheet you have in front of you. Tonight, we have two promotions and a retirement. And we're going to go through the promotions first in rank order, and then we'll get to our retirement. First up for promotion to the position of Sergeant of Police is Mike Pentecost. Mike, come on up. Mike's been a member of the police department for about 15 and a half years. He was hired on July 5th, 2000. He's a graduate of Elmer's College in 1998. Mike took our sergeant's exam in 2015. Very extenuous exam, took a couple days to complete. Mike is the second promotion off that sergeant's exam, and I'm proud today to be here to promote him to the rank of sergeant. Mike has served in patrol. Mike has served in investigations. He was transferred to investigations in 2009 and did his five-year term, went back into patrol in 2013, and then in July 9th of 15, came back into investigations because he loved being a detective so much. So Mike is on a second tour of investigations. It's going to leave a huge void for us investigations on his promotion. We filled it, but can't beat experience. Mike has served with honor and dignity for his 15 years on here. In his 15 years, he's achieved or accumulated 18 honorable mention documents in his personnel file. Mike has been an exemplary police officer. He's going to be an exemplary sergeant. And as a detective, he's an active member of DuPage County Major Crimes Task Force. He's very involved in our COP program and CPA program. He actively teaches at the senior center almost on a monthly basis right now, various programs to our seniors. And he's a current Fraternal FOP president, which he's going to continue on during his promotion. He's a bike unit officer, so it gives us good experience as a bike unit member coming into the rank of sergeant as well. So Mike is here with his wife Katie, daughter Sammy, and Maddie. Girls, want to come up? Mike will be badge number 241 of our sergeant ranks. Step up and be heard. I usually don't have that problem.
Oh, no.
Please raise your right hand. That's your cheat sheet. I, Michael J. Pentecost.
Aye, Michael J. Pentecost.
Having been appointed to the Office of Probationary Sergeant of Police...
Having been appointed to the Office of Probationary Sergeant of Police...
In the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois...
In the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois...
In the County of DuPage, aforesaid...
In the County of DuPage, aforesaid...
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois...
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois...
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office...
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office...
Of probationary temporary sergeant of police to the best of my ability.
Of probationary sergeant of police to the best of my ability. All right, we're on to promotion number two. Deputy Chief Ewald's here for retirement. We're not going to get to him in a little bit, though. His retirement has caused a promotion to be made to the rank of Deputy Chief of Police. The rank of Deputy Chief is appointed by the Chief of Police. After careful consideration and much thought put into the process, I've selected Sherri Pateasik as the new Deputy Chief of Police to replace Deputy Chief Ewald. Sherri? Sherri's been a member of the department since July of 1989. She's a 2005 graduate from COD. She has an associate degree in criminal justice. Sherri has done pretty much everything within the police department. She's been an investigator for five years, transferring to investigations division in 2001. After transferring back to patrol division in 2008, she tested for the rank of sergeant and was promoted to sergeant in 2008. As a sergeant, she's scheduler, taskmaster, report review person, has worked every shift, has done almost everything you can do as a patrol sergeant, which made her an excellent choice to be deputy chief. She's an FTO, she's an ET, she's on the Major Crime Task Force. She has a Chief's Award of Merit for Investigation as one of the lead detectives in the 2001 homicide of McMahon homicide. She has a life-saving award. She's Division Meritorious Award for the arrest of Doug Thigpen for bank robbery, working in conjunction with the FBI. She's here tonight with her daughter Jamie, her granddaughter Isabella, daughter Kelsey, son James, and her husband Christoph. So Sherri is being honored tonight with the promotion to the rank of Deputy Chief of Police.
Please raise your right hand. I, Sherri L. Pateasik.
Aye, Sherri L. Pateasik.
Having been appointed to the Office of Deputy Chief of Police...
Having been appointed to the Office of Deputy Chief of Police...
In the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois...
In the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois...
In the County of DuPage, aforesaid...
In the County of DuPage, aforesaid...
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois...
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois...
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of...
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of...
The Office of Deputy Chief of Police to the best of my ability.
Of the Office of Deputy Chief of Police to the best of my ability.
You're not done.
All right, now we have the promotions over. This is really about recognizing Steve. Thank you all for coming here to help recognize Steve's 27 years at the Glendale Heights Police Department. Steve, come up here. Tonight, we recognize... Tonight, we recognize Deputy Chief of Police who's dedicated 27 years of his life to serving and protecting the citizens of the Village of Glendale Heights. Deputy Chief Ewald officially retires on June 8th, 2016, after a long and distinguished career with our village. Deputy Chief Ewald began his career with Glendale Heights on January 26, 1989. Throughout Steve's career and regardless of his assignment, Steve has been a dedicated professional police officer, cares deeply for the citizens of Glendale Heights, and the officers he has helped mold and mentor through his long and distinguished career. The highlights of Steve's career are many, and his file is full of commendations and letters of thanks. Here are a few of the highlights of Steve's career. 1996, a general detective, Steve was assigned to be one of the lead detectives in an attempted murder case. Through Steve's investigative skills and involvement in the case, the assailant, who had severely injured his spouse, was arrested, tried, and convicted. It was a pretty heinous crime, one that was solved very quickly and professionally, and much to Steve's credit. Some of you don't know that Steve was assigned to as an undercover police officer for many years. 1998, Steve was assigned as undercover officer at Dumeag. Steve was the buying officer in a case that ultimately seized 25 ounces of cocaine, three handguns, one machine gun, two vehicles, and over $24,000 in currency, along with the arrest of four highly significant DuPage County narcotics traffickers. In December of 1998, Steve was again the buying agent in a case that culminated with the purchase of 10 ounces of cocaine and the arrest of three highly sought-after narcotics dealers. With everything Steve has done in his career, maybe the highlight moment came when he was a sergeant. He might not remember what I'm talking about. Well, I'm sure you do. In October 2004, Steve was a patrol sergeant working midnight shift when a report of a structural fire came over the radio. The fire at 7:43 is full and almost fully engulfed the entire building. In this fire, four people tragically lost their lives. However, Steve, along with Officer Somerville, who's in attendance tonight, were able to secure a ladder from the fire department... secure a ladder from the fire department and rescued two elderly residents and their dog from a second-floor apartment. In total, through the leadership efforts of Steve and his organizational skills at the scene, 26 residents were saved from the building. It's a testament to what we do in law enforcement every day. It's a testament to the dedication Steve has to his officers and the citizens that nothing stands before safety and life preservation. This is a small sample of what Deputy Chief Ewalt has accomplished. Hardly sums up a 27-year career of service to the residents of Glendale Heights, the members of the department, and DuPage County law enforcement as a whole. Steve has been a true mentor and a friend to us all. Steve has been instrumental in creating the professional police department we have today. Steve has served in almost every facet of the department, and I mean every facet of the department. Patrol officer, juvenile officer, evidence technician, detective, dare officer, grade officer, Vega officer, Safety Town Coordinator, Dumegg officer, and Dumegg supervisor, administrative officer, patrol sergeant, support operations division commander, asset forfeiture and special accounts manager, police officer, recruitment supervisor, internship coordinator, event emergency management coordinator, deputy chief of support operations, and his last assignment, deputy chief of operations. Steve is currently in charge of all patrol and investigations. Steve has also been an active member of many organizations throughout the village and the county. He's held every position in the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Board and served as past vice-president of the DuPage County Senior Managers Association. Steve's also involved in many other organizations throughout the county and throughout the county in law enforcement. We'll certainly miss Steve's everyday presence at the department and hope that he keeps in touch with us. Please join me in wishing Steve good health in his retirement and great success in whatever the future holds for Steve and his family. Steve's wife Beth and his daughter Hannah are here. Come up here. This has been a special career for Steve, and it's a long, long, faceted, highly rewarded career. He's going to do well in his future. Mayor, you have a gift?
Yes, they do.
We also have, from the village, a plaque awarded through Steve, Deputy Chief Steve Ewalt, 27 years of dedicated service of Glendale Heights Police Department and to the community. Tomorrow is... Anybody who wants to come join us, help celebrate Steve's retirement, 4:30 at the golf course, please be there and help us celebrate Steve's career. Steve?
I just want to say a couple of things of thanks. It'll be short, because hopefully I don't get emotional. First off, you know, those awards that... Those incidents, you know, there was a lot of people... There was a lot more than just Mike and I there. It was a whole ship. Larry was there. Actually, Larry was the watch commander there, and Denny King, and a whole bunch of other people. None of those incidents were done solely by me. It's all teamwork. Even the undercover is all a team. So I certainly don't take credit for all those things. But in listening to all the things that you said I did, I guess I'm really tired. I did have a hand in a lot of different things and a lot of different programs, things that I'm proud of, and again, I didn't do those alone. A lot of those things were done with a lot of the officers out here and a lot of the executive staff members that are up here. I want to thank everybody. I want to thank the board and executive staff and many of you I'm close friends with still and hope to be close friends with you for years to come. You'll see me around. You know, I plan on next year helping out with the fishing derby again. I couldn't this year due to a conflict, but it's been... Obviously, everybody knows it's been kind of one of my things here. But thank you again. Like I said, I'm going to keep this short, so thank you.
We're good? Time for cake?
We're good. This meeting is recessed. I'd like to call this meeting back to order. We now go to public discussion of agenda items. If there's anyone in the public that wishes to address this board on an agenda item, please step forward. Bill? Being done, we move on to the consent agenda. Trustee Schmidt?
I move we adopt the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We'll call a vote.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
The consent agenda is approved. There is no old business. And new business, number one, is an ordinance to approve and authorize the annual appropriation ordinance of the village of Glendale Heights, Illinois for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2016, and ending April 30th, 2017. And this is first reading. We're now back to public discussion of agenda items, and since there is no agenda for the committee of the whole, we will not be having committee of the whole tonight. So if there's anyone out there who wishes to address this board on any matter, please step forward. Being done, Trustee Pojek?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? This meeting is adjourned. Next meeting, remember, is June 23rd. Thank you.